Question three, how does the site plan reflect the comments of approximately seventeen people who asked for new recreational fields? Again, same language in the master plan. At the twelve seventeen hearing, one week before Christmas, which hearing lasted several hours. How does it reflect it? How does the site plan reflect the needs analysis for new recreational fields as demonstrated by the community at the hearing back in December and as reflected in the planning board's adopted two thousand nine EAF? And at this point, I just need to highlight that this planning board, maybe not these particular members, when they went through their EAF, they provided that the new rec park will, quote, relieve a longstanding need for additional recreation playing fields and facilities, quote, end quote. Another quote, "The need for additional recreational spaces, especially playing fields, has grown with the population, and the types of fields needed are changing since more diversity and interest in girls' sports and various adult leagues." And this is interesting, quote, "The Rhinebeck falls in the low range of acceptable national standards for National Rec and Park Association for recreation space. We have twenty-one acres of recreation per thousand, and the association recommends twenty-one point two-five to thirty point five acres. We have eighty-four acres and only five point four to active recreation." And five, the final point I urge you to ask this park committee is how does the site plan comply with the demands of the conservation easement identifying the primary use of the park to be outdoor recreation? And Ms. Hayden pointed out that open space is essential to the physical and mental health of the community, but likewise, sports and physical activity are essential to the physical and mental health of people. And the easement, if you compare the language of how it was changed, the use, you'll see that it went from "The property shall be used solely for parks, ag, forestry, recreation, and trials." This is the first sentence only, just because I'm limited on time. Two, "The property shall be used solely as a public park devoted to outside, outdoor recreational uses, both active and passive." In conclusion, the site plan before you is devoted largely to farmland and open space more than rec fields. Winnicky Land Trust serves, seeks to preserve farmland and open space, but it's the town and village who own this land. While we all benefit from the beauty of open space that it provides to our community, open space must not supplant new rec fields. Excuse me. Winnicky is merely a custodian of the easement here. I'm afraid that the current plan fulfills a vision that Winnicky has for our rec park and not what our community has for our rec park. The town must ensure the design of this park is guided by our community, not by an ideology that conflicts with the master plan, with the terms of the easement, and conflicts with hundreds of residents who signed a petition setting forth a need in our only rec park in Rhinebeck. Thank you.
Gail Nash.
My name is Gail Nash, and I promise I'll be very brief. I have ten grandchildren. The majority reside in the Rhinebeck School District. I attended the planning board meeting last December. It's almost ten months ago when the town hall was filled, just as it is now, with people concerned about this project. It was about a week before Christmas, twelve seventeen, I heard. It was a busy time, and I thought maybe there was a mistake made. But you see, I've been looking for those minutes ever since, the minutes from the twelve seventeen meeting. They seem to be the only minutes not posted in the past twelve months. So when will I see these minutes? Or when will you let me know about it so that the public can be aware? Nearly everyone who spoke at that meeting said they supported athletic fields at this public park. I believe nearly twenty people spoke that night. So why hasn't the public had the opportunity to read those minutes? I even saw a woman present the planning board with a petition for more soccer fields. It appears to me that the community has spoken, yet the plan has not changed at all. The town needs to listen to its community. This is a public park. I would ask you to tell me why the minutes have not been posted or let me see them online. A lot of support was shown for sports and healthy living. How wonderful. A public park for the good of the community. I know you work hard, every single one of you, and I ask you to realize what's good for the community. In our hearts and minds, we all know that the children are the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Rhinebeck Soccer League?
Hi, my name is Carrie Karwetsky, and I am a village resident. I am a mother of two children in the Rhinebeck School District, and I am the Recreation Director for the Rhinebeck Soccer League, and I'm also a board member, and it's in that capacity that I'm before you today. I'm going to read a statement that the Rhinebeck Soccer League issued for this meeting, and so I'll just start reading. So, "Dear Chairman Trimble, Chairman Miller, and Board Members, the RSL Board issues the following statement as it relates to the Thompson Mazzarella Recreation Park Site Plan Application currently before your boards. RSL appreciates the consideration it is being given to improve and expand the active recreation space in the new rec park. RSL further asks that the Town, Village, and the TMP Committee consider the following," and I have six points. "RSL members are dedicated civic-minded residents who donate their time and money. We raise funds for materials and equipment to ensure that the children of this community have places and opportunities to play the great game of soccer. We look forward to doing the same at the rec park. For this reason, RSL is excited about the central location that the Thompson Mazzarella Rec Park Site has planned for expanded recreational use. Number two, RSL members remain available to Park Committee, Village, and Town as volunteers to help planning and/or actual improvements to the TMP property in its development of athletic fields. Number three, RSL looks forward to using the great lawn area for soccer practices and games and hopes that, together with some volunteer help from our RSL members, we can reseed these fields and use them as soon as possible. Number four, the proposed concession stand and bathrooms presented in the fieldhouse will certainly serve RSL very well, and we look forward to using them. We are eager to utilize the concession stand for fundraising efforts as well. Number five, RSL is a recognized not-for-profit 501(c)(3) corporation. As such, donations to our league are tax deductible. RSL is working on a fundraising plan so that we can contribute to soccer field developments at TMP, which includes a turf field. Number six, finally, we strongly encourage the Park Committee and the boards to continue to assess the changing needs of the RSL community and the use of the town's rec park. Toward this end, we specifically request that this continued assessment include consideration of the current agricultural land at TMP, which can be used for future recreational fields. Thank you for your consideration of Rhinebeck Soccer League in the site plan application before you. Thank you.
Kathleen Ghee.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Ghee. I've been a thirty-year resident of the village of Rhinebeck. I live on fifteen Oak Street. The Rhinebeck Recreation Park for me and my family has always been, and I'm sure to everybody, it's such a tremendous asset to this community. And the planned expansion of the park is very exciting. Your presentation tonight, it's just awesome. It just sounds like it's going to be great. But my concern comes more from a security, safety issue, and I just want to make sure that as you continue with your plan, you're aware of a security issue that may affect this park and the parents and the children who come here to enjoy it. The Rhinebeck Village Zoning Enforcement Officer has recently sent the landlord of forty-seven West Market Street a cease and desist because three new tenants moved in in two thousand twelve and opened without review or village approvals. The new tenants at forty-seven West Market Street are nonprofit corporations, and at this Rhinebeck site, they are treating severe mentally ill, severe substance abuse, and they treat people with sexual addictions, and a high percent of the clients are court referred. Pharmaceuticals are also distributed. Forty-seven West Market Street is five hundred feet from the boundary of this recreation park. It's, we're just your neighbors. The clients are dropped off by the Medicaid taxis. They're not supervised. The business model of the three corporations is different from what used to be there. So they are not supervised, and as a result, you can see twenty more of them hanging outside. They also can, they can and they do disperse very easily into the community. As a parent and a grandparent, as a retired youth minister, as a retired preschool teacher's assistant, I think this is a safety risk for the children and the parents who visit and continue to visit in the future our rec park. And I just hope that the village has your support in the enforcement of our zoning laws so that the community park will always be safe for our young people. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca Stotts.
Good evening. I'm Rebecca Stotts. I am the Director of the Rhinebeck Community Nursery School, and every year in the fall we get together to have a back-to-school picnic. Unfortunately, we have our picnic at the Red Hook Rec Park Playground because the Rhinebeck Playground currently doesn't have bathrooms. So we at the Rhinebeck Community Nursery School are very excited that new restrooms are being incorporated in the plan. Thank you.
Rodney Johnson.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Rodney Johnson, and I just want to say thank you guys for letting me speak. I did want to state for the record that because I was the lead ornithologist for the Hudsonia Study, that I am strictly speaking as a homeowner in the Hilltop Conservation District of Rhinebeck and a business owner here in the Rhinebeck Village. I'm basically here to talk about some of the wildlife on the property. Basically, it's really good ecologically, especially lower fields where the pavilion will be built. The one issue I saw doing studies there and in years past, just there as a passive recreationist, that the farming practices by the neighbor, there should be a farm plan in place. Because it is an ecologically important site, there are birds there that would breed there, such as bobolinks, eastern meadow larks, savannah sparrow, vespa sparrow, possibly some more, that if there was a proper management plan in place, they would be able to breed there. Currently, there's other parks in Rhinebeck and throughout the county that have these plans in place just to protect the birds, and not just birds, but mammals, amphibians, reptiles, especially the location of the lower meadows being in a floodplain. It's very ecologically sensitive, not just for birds, but for other wildlife. And then I guess one other thought I had was, do we have to have the industrial-type component of farming? Why can't it just be hay? Because obviously, when we, I heard about pesticides and so forth, with the corn and soybeans currently being grown there, you obviously are using, those things are being used on the property. There's no way you would get it to look like that. As an ex-farm boy, by the way, from Pennsylvania, there's no way your fields would look like that without using those chemicals. So it might be in the park's best interest to just go with hay in the future, as opposed to soybeans or corn or silage of any type. And then I guess one other issue I had, I'm all for spreading manure, but not in mid-July, next to the trails. It kind of turns people off. I mean, myself, I kind of like it. I miss it once in a while, but some people might not enjoy that. So that's just, really, the only thing I had to say about that as far as the fields, the hay fields. The one thing I did want to bring up, because I've consulted companies, such as Dow Jones in New Jersey, their property, not the company, but the corporate lands, one issue that will probably be an issue down the road with a lot of mowed grass, ball fields, et cetera, which I am for, you're going to have a Canada goose issue. And just, we have, you have a maintenance, a thought of what the maintenance will cost you down the road, but there will come a time with all this mowed fields and grasses that Canada geese will be a problem, so that will have to be taken into consideration. You'll have to hire guys to come in with terriers on a regular basis, or when there's events or so forth, certain times of the year, of course, and I would be glad to volunteer my time to consult and maybe deal with those kinds of things. And so that's pretty much all I have, and thanks.
Thank you. Howie Trout.
Hello, I'm Howie Trout. I've been on the park committee since day one, which will be ten years next summer. And over the last ten years, we've been listening to various groups with their interests. Besides the baseball and soccer, there's been lawn bowling. We had a gentleman come one year and ask for a lawn bowling area because he was in a league down in Westchester. We had an interest in a dog park in the beginning. We've also had interest in, obviously, there's volleyball down there, tennis, basketball, and we even had New York State with their interest in their archaeological finds. So my point is, all these things have been holding up this park. We listen. We've been listening for ten years. Some people say we don't listen, but we have been listening for ten years. So I'm just asking both planning boards here to accept the plan as presented, just so we can get moving. Thank you.
Thanks, Howie. Joanne Gelb.
Hi, my name is Joanne Gelb, and I'm a village resident. I first want to thank Sally and Ted and Frank and the boards. This has been a lot of work. This is a lot of time, and you are appreciated. I wanted to speak, I'm also a grandparent of four children, three of which are old enough to do sports, and I really acknowledge the need for sports availability. But I'm here as a gray-haired person because nobody has stood up yet to speak for the older population and what this plan is going to make available to us. I'm going six years now running brain games at the Star Library for seniors, and my husband and I both started the board game afternoons on Tuesday afternoon in the town hall. I have a dream that one day we're going to have a community center that's going to be intergenerational, because I think there are things that we can learn from each other, the generations. I think it would be swell if young people sat down with older people and learned what canasta is, or, you know, instead of Angry Birds, maybe play a little bit of Mahjong, which clickety-clacks too. I do want to address this because, I don't know, as a gray panther, I feel like I'm being, you know, upside in my head. I see this handout that says seventeen people who asked for new recreational fields, and why aren't they being given what they asked, and this and that? There have been more than seventeen seniors every year requesting more time for seniors at the pool, and we are turned down because it is there for the children. I don't know if few people with children know that. I'm quoting Linda Murray's post in the Rhinebeck Forum today, Community Forum. "Here, the county gave Rhinebeck a golden opportunity to enhance its only rec park to meet the needs of all generations, including its youth." Granted, but I don't hear anything except people asking for more space for more fields for the youth. I'm not really sure. We do have to take care of the youth. They are the future. But I'm not really sure what the demographics of age is and what's being addressed for all the different age groups. And I just urge us to, you know, keep some of us in mind as well. We may not be as vocal, and we don't have cute kids handing out flyers, and I'm not an attorney or an engineer, but I've got a lot of heart in what my husband and I do is, yes, we volunteer. I'm not, I don't know who wrote these. I'm going by quotes, whoever wrote this on the community forum and whoever handed this out.
Would you please address the planning board?
Okay.
We don't want discussions between the audience.
Okay, thank you. So I'm just saying that we all need to be addressed, all ages in this community, and, you know, do remember that those of us that are older, we give our time, and we give it freely, and we give it to everybody. Thank you for all the hard work you've done.
You wanted to give, Andy, you want to talk? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Andy Imparati. I am the General Manager at the Dutchess County Fairgrounds. And I'm kind of added a loop a little bit, but I've heard some comments, read some comments, and I would just like to reinforce the fact that we have a field at the fairgrounds that has been given freely to the community to use as a soccer field. We also have a little league field. And I must say, since two thousand and eleven, when Irene came through, our soccer field has not been used. Now Seth has been in this week. I understand that we're going to start playing soccer on the fairgrounds again this year. We are more than happy to have children come and play soccer and baseball. So I'm just here to say it's there, it's available, please come and use it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So. Let's do it. You know, the public hearing will continue next month. We're going to decide now. Now, this is the first time that the both planning boards have met, and we have some procedural issues that we have to work out as to how we're going to go on from here under the interministerial agreement, so.
Correct. At this point, just so you all do understand, there will be further opportunity, we've reached the end of the list, the further opportunity to comment as new things come up, come out, as new decisions are made. What we need to do tonight, the issues we're facing right now, so you understand what we're trying to do here, is the Town Board of Rhinebeck is the lead agency under Seeker. They have to make a seeker determination before the public hearing on the park, which they've asked the planning board for the town and the planning board for the village to convene. Before we can close the public hearings, they have to make a seeker determination. What we have to do is develop a recommendation to them so they can make their seeker determination at one of their regularly scheduled meetings, which will be done at a public meeting. And what we're trying to do right now is decide how much time we have to give them to do that so we can schedule the meeting here again for all of you, so we don't have to go through the whole re-notification process, so you all know exactly when we will be reconvening this public hearing, this joint public hearing. I don't know if you might have some thoughts on how we might try to schedule this?
I think the first question that has to be addressed is, when can the planning boards come together to discuss the fundamental question that needs to be addressed and communicated to the Town Board? And that question is, it's really a two-pronged question. Is the Phase One master plan that's been proposed and the subject of the various site plans, special permit, wetland, and other applications that are before the two boards, is that Phase One plan consistent with and a component of the overall master plan for the park that was adopted by the Town Board back in June of two thousand and nine? And secondly, if the response to that is yes, then the question is raised as to whether that plan, the Phase One plan, raises any potential environmental issues that were not addressed, that these boards believe were not addressed by the Town Board in its seeker declaration, negative declaration of June two thousand and nine. If the answer is that there are new environmental issues raised by the Phase One plan, then there would have to be additional environmental analysis done before the Town Board could proceed with a seeker determination. If there are no new environmental issues involved and the master plan for Phase One is deemed consistent with the master plan for the overall park, then the Town Board would be in a position of issuing what we call a statement of consistency under Seeker, deeming the, essentially deeming the prior negative declaration to apply to the Phase One development plan. And once the Town Board had done that, these two boards, the village planning board and the town planning board, would then be in a position to deem the applications that are before your boards complete, because absent a seeker determination, a final seeker determination, those applications are not complete. But once the Town Board had acted in that regard, these applications would be complete. You could reconvene a public hearing jointly or separately, actually, and take action on the respective applications that are before your boards. So the first question is, you know, the time for your discussion, the discussion between the boards, based upon what you've seen in presentation and what you've heard in comment as to the consistency of the plan, Phase One plan with the overall plan, and then the question of whether any new environmental issues are raised.
Do we have any questions from any of the board members tonight? Because I have a couple that I'd like to ask and at least present them to the applicant and for that matter to other interested party. So if you will.
Yeah.
I was a little unclear as to what Phase One will include. Will there be a concession stand? Everything I've read says the provisions to put one in will be there, but there will be no actual utilities, and I thought the block grant required that we have the handicap bathroom and concession. So if someone can come back with a very clear answer on that next time, I would appreciate that, because if it needs to be included, I want to see it on the plan. Number two, I've asked a number of times for a needs analysis that was done by the park. That's wonderful that we have a needs analysis that was done back in two thousand and six. We need another one, because our comprehensive plan, our master plan, requires us to constantly reevaluate our community's needs, and that goes for everyone. Good example, the gardens, the project down there where everybody has a nice little garden and everything, it skyrocketed. Started out as a little thing, you can't get a space in there. It needs to be bigger. I heard a mention of it getting expanded. Well, I know people who said, "We really need more, we want more." It needs to be at least double the size. If that's going to be a problem for Winnicky or the park committee in the future, it needs to be addressed right now. So if we have a big, severe interest in more garden space, we need to make sure that those people are able to do that. The swimming pool came right out of the blue. That's been a problem for years. Older people getting swim time, you're not the only one. I can't get in there. There's a swim team and school and everything else. That's an issue. That's a long-seated issue, and it should be addressed with the Town Board and the Park Committee and everything else. But yes, it should be addressed, and they should answer for that and say, "It's not all about the kids." Absolutely not. It's about the whole community. And I think that's the most important thing we can do with this, is to make sure that the entire community is addressed. And my personal fear is, we have a land conservation company involved here. Once you sign off on a plan, it is written in the easement that that stamp mandates what will be done on that property. You can't go back and say, "Do over, I want a couple of things over here." Not going to happen. Not going to happen, because the mission for Winnicky Land Trust is to preserve open land. They're not going to give you a larger garden. open land. They're not going to give you a larger garden and another lacrosse field or a second swimming pool in the middle of their preserve. It's not going to happen. Parking, I've asked at least three times now that what will be done with the traffic that comes into that site. Anybody who goes down there in the summertime knows when you drive by that swimming pool, those little kids are darting all over the place. All you're trying to do is go back and park quietly, take a walk or whatever, because it's nice to walk. A lot of people take their dogs out there now. There's nothing, it's been done. With increased traffic, that area has to be re-engineered, so that the cars can go past and access the back, and without kids running out in a row.
Okay.
I think that's really all I need to go on about. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I guess we were talking before that we do things a little differently.
Yeah.
The village, you know, usually does a public hearing, and then we begin site plan review, but the town does it...
We do it. We keep our public hearings open until we have completed the site plan review, completed any special permit reviews. And then at the, at a public hearing, if we're prepared to say that we've completed that process, to make the Seeker determination, and at that point, close the public hearing and then act on those. So we have a little bit of a problem here in that our two processes are a little bit different.
Technically, you have to keep the public hearing open.
Right.
Until there's a Seeker determination.
By the town board.
Because no application is complete until there's a Seeker determination, and you can't close a public hearing until the application is complete.
Right. Correct. At any rate, we have a number. I guess one question that we have here, then, for the park committee, is just to make sure we're clarified on exactly what is included in Phase One, because that's all that our two boards can address at this time, is what's involved in Phase One.
Can they answer that now? Is that a question they can answer now?
Is that something you can answer now?
Can you re-clarify what is Phase One, in response to the question that was asked here?
Is it specific to the concessions?
Well, that is certainly one question.
I think the question is generally specific to the pavilion and those facilities that are within the pavilion, restrooms, concession stand, et cetera.
Well, in addition to that, the infrastructure was specifically spelled out that we would put the infrastructure in place, which is not true. The only infrastructure going in place is directly back to the fieldhouse, and that's where it stops. And yes, provisions will be made to stub up. But, you know, if we're going to put in, you know, if it ever happens, this big turf field, which is enormously expensive, if by chance it does go in, it needs drainage and everything under it. Is that going to cut across the parking lot and through the patios and everything that were just installed? That's infrastructure. That needs to be considered now. So the original Phase One plan...
I don't know what you want us to respond to.
I'm asking, I would like to know a detailed list of Phase One, and I think that's what the question was. On June 4th, we had a discussion with you at the village's planning board meeting, where you gave a list of these bullets of the things that were Phase One. Is that...
I'll look at that again. Just to be easy on it, because I'm not the engineer, I'll have the information that's in the green. In regard to the concession stand...
They said this was Phase One at the June 4th meeting. They met with us and discussed.
In regard to the concession stand, I met with Ann Saylor several months ago, and she said what the county will be looking for in terms of completion for the block grant is the completion of the restroom, that the restroom has to be usable and safe, and the concession stand could happen in the future. But their funds...
I disagree with that. It's spelled out very clearly in the agreement. So all I ask for, very simply, maybe I'm wrong, God knows, it happens sometimes, but all I'd like to know is, I'd like to see the agreement so it says, "We don't have to do it." That's all.
Okay, so you would like something from county planning, from community development...
The list of requirements, yes. It's very specifically, because I know a lot of people were anxious for both fundraising and use, public use. Is the concession stand, does it have to be part of Phase One? I think it's important that we factor that in, because it's probably another $50,000 that's got to go into that budget.
Well, I'm just telling you about our discussion with Ann Saylor, who heads the community development block grant, and she was very clear what was needed. So I will ask her to provide us with a letter that we could then submit to the planning boards.
And I bring up the drainage issue very simply, because you brought it up. You said, "We're going to make sure that we put in this infrastructure so as not to have to rip off what has already been done."
I'll ask our engineer that.
There's some, I'd just like to point something out. The planning boards are not constrained by what the county is requiring you to do. We think that probably if you get the money from the county, you want to make sure that the planning boards do look into what the county wants you to do. But we're not constrained by the county. We're constrained by what you gave us to look at, and if you left something out that the county wants, that's not something that we can force you to put back in there. It's the same thing with conservation easements. I believe the easement is between Winnekee and the town, and Dutchess County, I believe, also holds an easement. It's between the county and the town and the village in terms of the property. None of those were subject to planning board review or approvals or anything like that. So actually, the enforcement of those two easements, one has to be done by Winnekee, the other would be done by Dutchess County. We certainly consider easements when we look at development plans, things like that. But legally, we are not constrained by them, because they were not part of any process of approval by either the village or town planning boards. So I think that's something everyone needs to recognize.
I think we also need to consider that they're abiding by the easement on the property, just like we look at any easement on any property, on any tax map, any plan submitted to us. We need to know you're abiding by that easement.
No, we don't. No, we don't. I'm sorry, Richard. We are not the ones who enforce the easement.
So if someone blatantly is not following an easement placed on a map, you're going to stamp that map?
We are permitted to stamp that map. The person who holds the easement...
We all know you're not going to do it.
The person who holds the easement is the one who's responsible for enforcing it. And we've run into this on a number of properties in the past, where easements have been placed on it, and for some reason, the easement holder chose not to enforce certain restrictions. It's like a deed restriction.
The town signed it.
That's fine for the town to sign it, but the planning board never approved any site plan or special permit, including any easements. Therefore, the planning board, through our processes, aren't. Oh, I agree, as the people who granted the easement, and Winnekee and the Dutchess County are the ones who hold the easements. Yes. We have a list here, which we're assuming is the list that lists Phase One, which was given to the village at the June...
June 3rd, June 4th meeting. And this list, as town planning consultant, I'm also aware, was aware of at that point in time, and that's what I've assumed is, in fact, Phase One. We haven't been told to the contrary. The one, and we'll go right through the list, Rich. I think it's probably the thing to do for everyone's benefit.
Sure.
Does it have the same list?
Yeah, you've got that same list.
That's what I was using to speak from, but yes.
Just for everyone's benefit, and I think what I'm doing is, let this kind of be a question and answer. I'm going to identify the item, and if that item is somehow deleted or modified, just let us know, okay? Obviously, erosion and sediment controls, clearing and grubbing, earthwork cutting in the new park entrance, an eight-inch water line tie-in to the 14-inch water main on West Market Street, a new eight-inch DI water line extending 650 feet into the property, a temporary two-inch water line extending the further distance into the pavilion area, electrical conduit and wire from the existing transformer by the pool to a new transformer by the pavilion. Clarification here. Install Phase One stormwater features. What is the extent of the Phase One stormwater features?
The stormwater features are going to be the 650 feet of the new access road with stormwater catchments and controls as part of that.
Okay. Including addressing the potential problem that's been raised by the library. Do you have any comment on that?
Yes. I mean, as part of the overall plan, one thing we haven't final finalized, we've got a lot of the concepts and everything's laid out, is to make sure that the final road width and the final details are all agreed upon, and then we're going to do the final thing, is going to be the final stormwater plan, which would address the stormwater controls in and around the library entrance as well.
Okay, so the stormwater plan itself is, for Phase One, is still pending. It's a work in progress.
Right. The final one is not yet available.
Okay, and that is, in fact, at least from the town's planning board standpoint, a requirement of the site plan submission. So that item has to come in before the plant, town planning board could act on the site plan. There's the matter of the installing 650 feet of the new park entrance. The specification of that is given here. 12-inch gravel subbase, three-inch base asphalt paving, inch and a half final top. New concrete sidewalks, curb and ADA sidewalk ramps. It's essentially along the access road.
That's in and around the library, and there's been a request for some minor changes to that, so.
And we discussed that at the June meeting. I think John suggested we'd like a grass strip along the road going down. We talked about the flow of pedestrians coming up from the Beakman Arms, sidewalk running from the old entrance past the new entrance down the hill. Some of the parking issues, which Steve Cook pointed out, the parking lot during the day is very, very crowded. Lots of people come with young children. Lots of senior citizens come to the programs, and it's very, it'd be very hard for them to walk up the hill from the pool parking lot to get to the library with young children or senior citizens, and we can't lose those spots. We have to figure out. We talked about moving a dumpster, maybe finding some spots. Steve pointed out the loss of a spot by the counterclockwise flow. So we have some, you know, site plan issues that we'll talk about when we get to the site plan review, sort of finalize the plan. And then I think John said the road didn't need to be that wide. You could save some money in terms of making the road a little narrower as you go downhill, saving some asphalt and stuff. So we have some issues we have to talk to in site plan review when we get there.
Okay. Then you've got street lighting, eight street lights along the 650-feet extent of New Park Road, new entrance stone wall and signage, which I believe you showed a depiction of earlier, the roadway connection into the Star Library, new connection, modifications to Star Library traffic routing and parking spaces, decommission the existing entrance at the Star Library, rebuild stone wall at old Star Library entrance, plant three trees at old Star Library entrance, plant 14 trees along New Park Road. And then finally, the pavilion bathrooms and structure is, is that only a portion of the pavilion, Frank? I know you talked about kind of the modular construction of that.
That's why it says pavilion bathrooms and structure. Otherwise, it would say bathrooms and concessions.
Yeah, I know that the bathrooms occupy...
The structure's actually roof structure, but holds up that...
Of the entire...
The envelope of the bathroom area.
The bathroom area only.
Will the porch outside, that 70-foot, will that be constructed in Phase One?
Loja.
Loja?
I don't know if the loja piece on the back is part of Phase Two, but the rest of the roof, the U-shaped element around the courtyard, will be...
Okay. Back to my question. Master plan specifies, I believe, a Phase One, and it even has a budget for it. And it specifically lays out, I believe, unless it's been changed, there's lighting out of the ball fields. So the master plan specifies that those will be roughed in. That's part of the structure. It's laid out. So I'm just, I'm questioning why the focus is placed on one aspect of it and not on the entire park. I mean, we have a skateboard park, also going to need drainage. God knows what that's going to be like. But you have a ball field, and maybe there's going to be a water fountain, who knows. But certainly lighting, are we going to dig that all up? We're not going to go through the great lawn, because we're not allowed to. So it has to go right around the area we're talking about, with parking lot development and everything. And it's logical, as a builder, as an engineer, to do that in Phase One, so as not to disrupt everything down the road.
Let me just answer a couple of your questions. One was about drainage. The drainage for the whole development is going to be configured now, so that the drainage for the synthetic field is part of the design package of the whole park, which is going to consider that flow and where that's going to go, as well as the skateboard park. And some of the other features are going to be considered and laid out, so that the stormwater for the site is going to be done. And what's going on for the first phase is to try to base that on what's available in the budget. So what can be done for the available monies that are available now? And so that's how the Phase One has been configured, based on that budget. So, and then as far as any conduits or other connections, they're going to be done prior to anything that's going to be paved in areas that can't be disturbed. You know, after it's completed, that work will be done. But the area leading from the existing parking lot all the way to the pavilion is not going to get completed yet, and that's indicated in this Phase One. So not all the conduits and everything has to be placed yet until the next phase of work is being constructed. And the whole idea is to be doing it in advance of the final pavement, so you don't have to go back.
Is that included as notes on the plan?
Yeah, the full set of plans will have...
Are there any notes providing exactly what is included?
Phase One, because what's going to happen is, to go to construction and bid this work, we're going to have to lay out for the contractor to bid on what is concluded. That's basically essentially this list you're seeing here. And we'll probably have a few add alternates, because depending on the budget that's available and what the bids come in, we want to make sure that we're going to be using the available budget. So we're going to have, we're going to have a little flexibility in the bid documents, so that you're going to have add alternates in there, so that if it's low bids and you can add a few things, we're going to try to add them.
What is the nature, my final question, if I can. What is the nature of the treatment of the sanitary sewage from the restroom facilities?
That is a septic tank and design.
Okay, I don't see that included in the, in the list of improvements.
Well, I think what we're trying to indicate is that that was inherent in the pavilion.
In restrooms plus, okay.
Correct.
So there's the next item, which is the development of the septic field and...
That is part of, yes, this Phase One.
And has an application been submitted to the health department yet for that and/or D E C?
Yeah, it was completed. I don't know if we, the final application's been submitted, but we've done all the perk tests and deep tests and done all the work associated with it. So it's just a matter of giving the application in.
Other questions, members of the boards?
Yes, I have a couple super questions. You used the, excuse me, you used the phrase early on, "waterless restrooms." Are we talking Porta-Jons, or are we talking the technology now where the water, waterless restrooms have a holding tank someplace?
Yeah, it's the Clivvis waterless design that's being proposed in the area that I pointed to.
Okay, I just want, I just want to get the verbiage correct, that's all. And the other thing is, the question I have is, with the restrooms in the provision, excuse me, in the pavilion, are they going to be winterized? Or are they going to be fair weather?
Well...
And who's, and when will they be open and closed? Because we have a problem down there now. I mean, this is just something to churn your minds.
I can answer, on the short term, it's going to have to be closed, because we're, the two-inch water line that we're proposing to come off of the eight-inch line is going to be done shallow, to just get down there for now, so that the bathrooms can be opened for the seasonal use of them.
Okay.
So then they'll have to be, that'll be, the system has to be blown down and, you know, made for, to suffice the winter.
I just wanted to understand what it was.
Clivvis isn't going to be built yet. It's part of later plan.
The permanent water pipe will go, lay exactly in the same spot. You're going to lay a two-inch water line down and down the road next year, whatever, whatever the schedule is, Phase Two. You're going to replace that with a more substantial, permanent water line?
Yes, a deeper, a deeper excavation and a larger line.
So at which time, everything gets shut down for X amount of time in October or November, something that's convenient to do construction work, something like that?
It could be done that way, or it could be just done adjacently. We're talking about a two-inch, you know, water line, so the excavation for the permanent line doesn't have to be that far away, and you could dig it and then move it and install it, and then decommission the two-inch line if you had to.
Any other questions? So I guess the position we find ourselves in, we now have a specific list of what is involved in Phase One, which is what's being presented to our two boards to review. And the question then becomes, from what Art was saying, do we see any environmental issues with what's being proposed?
We have to hold a separate vote. Just so you understand the difficulty that we're going to have as we go forward, the lawyers have said that there is no way the town can approve anything in the village, and we cannot approve anything in the town. So I will comment back and forth. We'll, we'll comment on the bathrooms. They can comment on the entrance and the road, but at some point, we'll have to have a vote where we approve the library circulation, the entrance, and they will vote on approving the bathrooms and visitor center and so on. So we have to sort of work this out, you know. We agree on how we're going to vote here.
On the Seeker issue, though, the town board is, in fact, the lead agency on behalf of all agencies.
Correct. So we have to make a recommendation. So we have to make a recommendation that-
To the town board.
To the town board, that we don't, do we have to have two votes, two separate votes?
I think we vote, since they wanted us to be a joint meeting, I think we could vote jointly, I think, I don't know, they didn't specify.
How about if we do it both ways?
Do it both ways. Otherwise, you got a question, how do you, how do you win the vote?
They're covered.
It seems to be that we're allowed further public comment after a further conference was done speaking.
We can do that, we can do that, sure, once again, the three minute rule does apply, and, yeah.
Not that you do seek, but that's the town board does seek. Point the application complete, thanks for your opening.
I'm just gonna recommend that you seek legal advice from your legal counsel on the issue of the conservation easement and your, your role in what you have to do here with this site plan, because no different than if Sally all of a sudden came in and decided she's gonna put those three hundred units in, you would have to, as a board, consider whether what she's presenting is consistent with an easement that's on the property, you are an arm of the town board, you are an arm of the village board, without them you do not exist, so, they sign this document, they're bound by this document, you are bound by this document, so to, to suggest that the easement does not come into play in your analysis of this site plan, in my opinion, is incorrect, so, I ask that you take that under legal advice with your own legal counsel.
I think we will have to agree to disagree on that, was anyone else who had any further comment they wish to make tonight?
I'd just like to ask, we totally have the opportunity to comment online, not everybody can attend the meeting, so we have it on-
That's a good question.
Well, we think, we have written comments, we have several people who, neighbors who concerned about drainage and erosion and lighting, disturbing them from-
Right.
Stuff, so, you can submit comments to the board in writing, who can email, I suppose.
Yeah, and I don't have the email address for the town clerk's office, but there is one, if you, if you call the town clerk's, I'm sorry, oh, it's on the town website, oh, even excellent, so yes, you can submit online.
Comments in writing until September seventeenth?
Yeah, and we are accepting comments in writing until September seventeenth for this hearing, but since we'll be continuing the hearing, we would continue to, certainly up until the, whatever the date it is that we finally can agree on, we're continuing this hearing until, we will be continuing to accept written and or email comments.
And you'll publicize that back?
I'm sorry?
You'll publicize that back?
Yes, and that, tonight, that's one of the things we'll be doing tonight, is both trying to publicize that people can continue to send in comments, and to the date that we hope we're gonna come up with tonight, when we know we're gonna continue this meeting, yes.
I'd like to make a comment, I didn't follow the protocol signing in when I came here, hope you breathe, well, hopefully you leave the scene with the right note. I'm Brendan Coffey, I've been in the town for twenty years, I've raised four kids in the town, they've all played sports, I've encouraged them to use the facilities around the town, I've always lambasted the fact that we can have a premier place to play something like soccer or football, and what we have in this plan is a very good solution to that, that's gonna be a premier field, we don't have to slough our kids off the Red Hawk or the Bard, we're gonna play on this field here, but the other point I wanna make, 'cause when I volunteered for the board a year ago, and it's been a long year for me, and I realized that these people have been kicking this thing around for eight years, this, this plan, when they said, you're not gonna be mowing field Brendan, you're gonna help us build this proposal, carry it forward, I said, what proposal, 'cause I've been down that town park a lot, and I even know there's a plan going on down there for a comprehensive recreation facility, and so I've done everything, I've swung the pool, I've been to the library, played tennis, my kids have played softball, but I've never seen the east side of that park, and if you haven't been down and haven't walked that park, you need to do it, 'cause once you get onto that trail system, you don't know you're in a park, you don't hear anything except for the kids to score a home run, you might hear them scream for a second, but you really get into a system where you're now in nature, and I'm not a big nature guy, but you take your dog down there, you take your kids for a walk, they're not, they're not flat trails, they flow in and flow out, they give you access to the woods, we're gonna plan to have some exercise stations attached to those, those trail systems, and I leave the comment that this is balanced, it's open space, you can lounge around some grand field like Central Park, you can use the athletic fields, and you can take advantage of the nature trails, it's really balanced, thank you.
Thank you.
So Art, what, what do we-
Yeah, wait, I think we have one more comment.
Okay.
I was, I'd like to leave, so I didn't get to some of your list, I'm sorry.
Ah, sorry, we took it away.
Michael DeCola, thank you all for all the work that's going on, I would like to, I had a coaching, soccer coach, I had a coaching workshop a couple weeks ago, and they told me you had to wrap all criticisms in a positive comment, so I'm gonna start with my positive comment, then I give my criticism and end with a positive comment, and they're all true. First of all, what's, what's been proposed and the flexibility of adding the great lawn, as the league letter said, thank you very much, I look forward to using it, I've got a team of twenty seven-year-olds now, so, we need space. So, thank you very much, and I look forward to collaborating with whatever entity is doing this to, to make that work go forward. The thing I think that got a little bit of comment, but I would love for you guys to, in your assessment of the, the plan that's being, being put before you, is this idea of the bathrooms at the existing park, the existing playground and tennis area, it's been talked about, I believe it should be part of phase one, I ju, I spent nearly every day in the summer at the park, 'cause my kid's on the swim team, and then we go to the playground, and then we've been there four times in the last two weeks after school. The park that we have, that you guys have worked so hard to make already and where we're planning to go, those kids deserve more than that porta potty that's there, it's a temporary solution, and it's ugly and bad, my five-year-old looked at me and said, Papa, that's really gross, and he's not, he's not faint of heart, he lives on a farm, he'll muck out stalls, it's not a good solution, and it needs to be solved earlier rather than later, it should be part of phase one, that we provide the people who use this park on a daily basis, and it's a large number of families with small kids, and we have accidents, our kids are going to the bathroom in their pants 'cause we can't make it to the library, or the porta potty is just too scary for them, so please, both the committee and the planning boards, consider making that an imperative of this first step, is that we take care of the people who are already using the park on a daily basis in a better way, and I've said this to everybody on the committee, it's not a surprise, and I know you're working on it, but I needed to say that here, so now I'll end with my, that was my criticism, here's the nice part, this is gonna be so great for all of us, and I, I really wanna support us getting through phase one, so that we can start tackling a lot of these problems that we're talking about, and there needs to be a way, as we, as we look at phase two, that the needs assessment and all the stuff that everybody's so nervous about is being incorporated proactively, so, my suggestion would be, is a positive thing for both the committee to do, and for those of us who've been standing on the side throwing darts, 'cause we're not seeing stuff that's really important to us, like the bathroom or the possibility of future expansion of fields, that we talk about how phase two is gonna be discussed, and we lay out some ways in which the community can re-participate in that discussion in a positive way, thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Anyone else tonight? Okay.
Just keep on talking.
Just keep on talking, well, I'm running out of things to say.
Well, if we, if we recommend something to the town board, if they could take action on it their next town board meeting-
Yes.
When would we, we could get back together and continue the public hearing?
Yes, that's what we would do, we would reconvene this public hearing.
So when does the town board meet again?
I believe they meet this coming, do we have a town board member here, I hope?
There's a couple of us.
When do y'all meet next?
Monday.
Monday, they meet Monday.
So what could we, is he writing something?
He's working on something, yeah.
Art's writing something.
Art's writing, so keep talking, so, potentially, if you had a recommendation, you could potentially do something with it Monday.
Yes.
Okay, and I think-
What kind of recommendation are we talking about?
It would be something to do with the seeker determination, it would not be-
So, if, if one were to feel that they were not consistent with the master plan, you could not make, you could not make that recommendation, is that fair to say?
If a majority, if a majority of the board felt that way, yes.
I, I agree with that, so, but a simple thing like the seventeen acre clause, I, we don't have our legal attorney here, yet, we're gonna make a pretty big decision, because ten years we've been working on this, and you need to make it tonight, even though there's a question as to whether or not you feel this easement or the master plan clause that says seventeen acres, and the garden club, will they be able to expand it, so you're gonna move forward with these questions unanswered, I think that's, I think it's irresponsible.
Richard, what we're not doing, what we're not doing is recommending an approval or disapproval of either site plan or the special use permit, basically what we're looking at is the phase one improvements that they're proposing to do, would those phase one improvements in and of themselves create any environmental problems?
Well, we just said, what we're doing is recommending, we're saying that we feel that is consistent with the master plan, and I don't-
No, Richard, we feel it is consistent with the original neg deck given for the master plan.
The one that said, we're gonna take seventeen acres out of production.
That's not what the seeker determination said, the seeker determination did not refer to that, it refers to any environmental considerations of what those elements are, whether it's seventeen acres or seven hundred acres, that's not relevant, that's part of site plan, that's part of the special permit process, all we're doing is saying whether or not, however many acres they put into, whatever they put it into, given what we can imagine and what we've been presented with, would that create an environmental problem, that's all we're doing.
Again, again, ten years, and for some strange reason we need to make this recommendation tonight, I think it's unwise, it took six months to put together a legal procedure for these two boards to sit together, are we in a rush to say, hurry up, let's do it now, so we can only have to meet twice, yeah, it would be nice, but there's questions open, and I have a problem moving forward with something that might be flawed, and there might be groups of people that are still not considered in this plan, so moving forward with phase one when it doesn't include the interest, best interest of the community is a problem.
What we're moving forward with is strictly the seeker determination, we are not approving phase one either from the special use permits required from the town standpoint, the wetland permit, or the site plan, and neither is the village in what, either their site plan approval or whatever special permit-
So we could entertain a motion and then have a vote on the motion-
Right.
And deal with that as a motion rather than-
Exactly, and what we'll do, we could do it both ways, once is a joint board's vote, and each board can also vote separately, and then if we, one board doesn't agree with it, then we can discuss exactly what we're gonna do.
So do we have the language of a motion drafted?
Do you want to read it?
I stated earlier that there was a, a two-prong action that needed to be taken by the boards, whether it's taken tonight or taken two months from now is, you know, is not, not what I'm commenting on, the two parts, though, deal with the fact that the components that are identified in phase one are in fact components of the overall master plan, in the view of these boards, and secondly, that they're, the question of are there environmental impacts, additional environmental effects, simple statement to that effect would be, and this would be, I think boards would just each adopt, one would be the village planning board, the other one would be the town planning board, finds the improvements proposed as phase one of the development of TTSM park to be, to be consistent as among the elements in the overall master plan adopted by the town board in June two thousand nine for the TTSM park, the village or town board, town planning board, further finds the implementation of the phase one improvements will cause no potential significant adverse environmental effects heretofore unaddressed in the environmental analysis for the TTSM park as culminated in the adoption of a neg deck by the town board prior to adoption of the TTSM master plan.
I have a comment.
Okay.
The installation of temporary lines are not consistent with phase one, there are elements, that's granted, that there are many things consistent, part thereof, so we're doing part of the job of phase one, but, there's nothing in phase one that says we're gonna put some temporary lines in, we're gonna come back and do, that's us working on the fly, it's not phase one, so, that one element of phase one is not consistent with the master plan.
Comment from the applicant?
That's consistent to the extent of, to the extent, financial, physical.
Again, the approach is to get the pavilion portion of the bathrooms open, so that's part of the action taken with the line, as a temporary line, as other funds come in and the next section of pipe that would be done, again, it's about the budget and trying to get the project moving forward and getting some components of the project completed, so that's why it's proposed as a-
I guess the question I would ask, as I recall from the master plan that was adopted by the town board, that all improvements, all implementation was also premised upon availability of funding, I believe that was also one of the clauses in that master plan.
That's correct, and I should mention in regard to the restroom pavilion, the funding is coming from the county.
It's consistent with the limit of financial resources available.
This week we see an extension to another year to those funds, we were very concerned we were going to lose the hundred thousand dollars, and that's why we've been pushing planning there, there was a request made by the town board for an extension, it was granted until August of two thousand thirteen, so, that grant is really pushing us, you know, whether it's the small line or the bigger line, to get that to the pavilion, so that way we do not lose the hundred thousand dollars.
That's, that's what we said last year, yet we've known for six months that that extension was available, but we didn't bring that up to anybody, 'cause we wanted to do the pressure game, sign here and this car is yours today, I've spoken to Mr. Coughlin, and if you press him a little bit, the county would actually give you another extension, so I don't think that's a big concern of us, the important thing is that we do it right the first time, we make sure we get this right the first time.
Right, so you comment correctly, you were accusing us of pressuring you, but then you suggested we could pressure county?
No, 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 I said, if we push him, push the issue-
You used the word pressure.
Let me, let me correct myself, I'm sorry.
By the way, I appreciate how much we've never met, I would appreciate, do not bang on the table, we hear you a lot enough, you don't get to bang on the table.
I appreciate if you sign the list or you come in next time.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, we're not gonna have this going on here at this point, Richard, Richard, we're not gonna have this sort of back and forth.
So, as I will finish explaining myself, if you plead with Mr. Coughlin and the county, they would be more than happy to extend your grant, they're not there to just take it away, they gave it to us because they believe in this project, they gave us all the other money, 'cause they believe in the project, so I don't like the tactic, yes, I'm accusing you of using a threatening bulldog, we gotta do it right now, it's not true, it's not true, so please stop that.
I'm sorry, Richard, no, we have, I threatened you, we weren't certain that we were not even going to get this extension, it took a thoughtful letter to county to make that request, they had additional questions, and they granted it, it's not us using that-
I, I apologize.
At any rate-
I'm just shocked, because how would I know about it, and you could possibly not know about it.
Okay, this is what we're going to do.
We're gonna make this most-
This is gonna be a democracy, and what we're going to do is, we're going to have a motion, and the majority will decide exactly how we're gonna do this, what I'm gonna do is, since I can't read Art's writing-
Yeah, he may have a motion if someone makes the motion.
It's, exactly, he's gonna read it, and if I get, and I'll do it first for the town board if that's available, except for the village board, and if I get a, a motion and a second, we will then vote on it, if we do not get a motion and a second, we will not vote on it. So Art, if you would read the-
Okay, for the town, for the town board?
Yes.
The town planning board finds the improvements proposed as phase one of the development of the TTSM park as set forth within the limit of financial resources available, to be consistent as among the elements in the overall master plan adopted by the town board in June two thousand and nine for the park, town planning board further finds the implementation of the phase one improvements will cause no potential significant adverse environmental effects heretofore unaddressed in the environmental analysis for the TTSM park as culminated in the adoption of a negative declaration by the town board prior to its adoption of the TTSM- the town board prior to its adoption of the TTSM Park master plan.
Could I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, I'll pull the board. Bob?
Aye.
Jesse?
Aye.
Woody?
Nay.
Richard? Sharon?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Would you read it for the village?
The village planning board finds the improvements proposed as phase one of the development of the TTSM Park as set forth within the limits of financial resources available, to be among, to be consistent as among the elements in the overall master plan adopted by the town board in June 2009 for the park. The village planning board further finds the implementation of the phase one improvements will cause no potential significant adverse environmental effects heretofore unaddressed in the environmental analysis for the TTSM Park as culminated in the adoption of a negative declaration by the town board prior to its adoption of the TTSM Park master plan.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
A second.
Michael? Tim?
Aye.
John?
Aye, and I just want to say, remind people that this is the phase one components.
That's all.
This does not include throws and all the questions.
Correct, correct.
So I vote aye.
And I will vote aye. So it's unanimous on-
With one, with one nay vote on the town side. So the recommendation to the town board will be forthcoming in written form, but you now know you have a recommendation to NEG deck phase one. Not, I'm sorry, to be, find that phase one is consistent with your original NEG deck, isn't that right?
Yeah, it'll be a state, it would be, it's a recommendation of a statement of consistency, essentially.
That you then have to confirm.
Right. I'll communicate with-
And Art will write up a resolution for you.
No, I'll communicate with the, with the, with the town board and the town, town attorney on that particular point.
Okay.
And then we're going to set another-
So now we need to set another date, and we will reconvene this public hearing.
Well, the question is, is it, you know, when is it likely that the town board would consider?
Monday.
Monday.
Well, we can set a meeting, we have to cancel it.
Yeah, it's contingent, yeah, it's contingent.
Right. We could set a meeting, but then if we set the public hearing meeting, we'd have to reconvene it. At least David and I would have to show up to reconvene it and then tell people the town board hasn't acted yet, so we're going to, actually, it'll all have to show up so we can vote on the time to reschedule it.
Awesome, Michael, remember, I, I can't speak to the village planning board's requirements, but the town planning board requires the drainage of study, or whatever you want to call it, a drainage plan before the, before the, to the extent that it relates to town.
But before the continuation of a public hearing.
You can continue the hearing, but before you could make any decision.
Right.
You have to have that plan.
But I think what we're looking to do is set a date to be able to continue a public hearing.
Yes.
From a village perspective, we're, we're going to be looking for final notes on the plan for that village board.
Right.
Is there, is there a resolution relative to the roadway and the grass strip and-
That's all something you're going to be discussing with the village planning board. All, all we're discussing tonight is just the seeker consistency determination, because-
Discussing that with the village planning board, because not only the roadway, but is the village, isn't it?
Like two-thirds of it's in the village, and the parks, the entrance circulation.
If the village agrees to the narrow road, which is what, you know, John was after, what happens?
We're going to have to put our heads together about what our road specs will let us do and what their road specs will let them do.
We were looking for a separation of the sidewalk from the roadway.
Different standards.
And that was a way of accomplishing that.
We have a non-vulgar.
John was saying something more than that.
But I think before everyone leaves, what I'd like to do is reschedule the resumption of this meeting so everyone knows when it is. Do you, do you want to give the town board a month?
What noticing do we need?
We don't have to do any noticing if we can schedule it tonight.
Is that, is that valid for the village to say?
That valid for you too, a continuation of a public hearing, you don't have to go through the re-noticing procedure, as long as you announce it at tonight's meeting.
Correct, or?
You're announcing, you're posting.
What we're going to do is announce when this meeting is going to be reconvened. We're, we're recessing it tonight, we're going to reconvene it at a future time. We want to announce that time, place, and date tonight, therefore we don't have to go through the whole noticing thing in the paper again, send out all the different certified letters and all that. Although we will still put it, you know, in the newspaper, on the websites and things like that.
So a month would be the 15th of October.
Does a month, does a month sound good from tonight?
We have two planning board meetings we have to have, I don't want to do it on the Tuesday night when the village board is meeting because, you know, they've come. Is that after the three board meetings? First?
First and Monday's meeting.
And this will be the eighth, the 22nd of October would be-
What kind of day is that?
That's a Tuesday.
Tuesday?
It puts the planning board back to back.
Does that, does that work with everybody?
It's all right with me.
Yeah, puts you back to back.
We're all right.
Could I hear, I guess we can do this as a joint committee. Could I hear a motion to reschedule, reconvene this meeting on October, Tuesday, October 22nd at 7:30?
Where?
Here.
So moved.
Okay.
So moved.
Is that okay here? This was nice, I got a couple of chairs.
We don't have to notice it.
You don't have to go through the whole official-
Well, we don't have, we don't have to.
But we're going to put it in the-
We will.
We're going to do it so people, well, you know. Okay, could I hear a motion to so reschedule?
So moved.
Second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good.
Aye did.
And I believe Tim made the second?
Yes.
Yes.
That was a good choice.
Okay.
Yes.
Right. Thank you all for attending. I want to stress that all we've done tonight is made a recommendation to the town of Bryan Bick planning, town board as lead agency on a seeker determination. No permits have been approved, no site plans have been approved, that all will await further arduous effort. And I thank you all very much for coming, and I really want to thank you all for really treating one another kindly.
He wants openly too.
Chad? Do you want to come?
Do we need to officially adjourn?
I guess so.
I guess, I think we need to officially adjourn.
But Daniel said he's doing well, doing his continuing republic.